I was gonna call the meeting to order. I'd like to call the meeting to order. All board members are present except for Tammy, who has the flu. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all.
We have one person this evening to speak at open forum. David Anderson from Lonsdale is going to talk about the lacrosse team.
Hi Chair and Board, my and Mr. Dittbrenner, my name's Dave Anderson. I'm a New Prague Lacrosse Association youth coach. I've also been asked to coach at the high school level by Dylan, the head coach. I'm here, I sent you guys all a letter on February 13th. Basically, the premise, there was a few typos in that thing. And the basis of my request is that as a youth coach, that has coached most of the kids that will be going forward in the JV program this year, I know where kind of where our numbers are gonna be at short term and kind of long term and where our sport's growing. And so my basis of my request was that kids that play through New Prague Lacrosse Association, if they play from another school, be allowed to co-op with New Prague. Currently, that's a very small amount of numbers, but knowing where we're at, we're gonna need every one of those numbers if we're ever gonna grow that sport in New Prague. These players are the same players that I've coached for the last four years. My son Reagan back here is a freshman. And those two of the players that, the two players that we're talking about in particular are Caleb Whips, and he's here, and Brendan O'Keefe. And I know that you guys have received a letter from Brendan's parents as well. Basically, I did talk to a couple of the school board members. One of you called me back, the other one I called and happened to catch at the door. Just kinda giving you guys a heads up that I was coming. Couple of things that were mentioned in those conversations is, one of them was that there needed to be a request in the need. I'm here to tell you that TCU's been, made that request as early as, I believe, April of 2018, maybe it was even before that, a couple of times with their former athletic director. And their new athletic directors made that request a couple of times. I know that the needs there, the New Prague Athletic Association this year doesn't even have any fifth graders or seventh graders on the New Prague Lacrosse Association thing. That's just showing you where our numbers are at. As a basis for how teams are formed, if we're gonna field a varsity team, that the ideal number's 24, the JV number's 24, and a 19, 9-10 team, which is considered a B-team in most schools, is also 24, that's 72 kids. We're never gonna be close to that in New Prague, at least not when these kids graduate behind me, not when Caleb and Brendan have the opportunity to play for us, not when my son plays here. Just because the sport's so new, it's still growing, and the areas that are around here that have lacrosse are already fully developed, you know, like the Prior Lakes and some of those north of us. The teams south of us, they don't have that support. TCU just put a trial lax last year. Nobody showed up for it because the ones that were interested are already playing for New Prague Lacrosse Association, so they canceled it. So the numbers aren't there even in there. So one of the, one of the board members I talked to said, hey, why don't they just start their own? Well, that's one reason, they don't start their own. There's no, there's a limited interest, and those guys are already playing. They played four years for us, they played proud for New Prague, and they'd play proud for New Prague in the future. Just because they're from another school doesn't mean that they wouldn't play just as hard as the kids on our New Prague team. So I just wanted to point out that the athletic director is there, the need is there. I know that the board has been talked to at TCU, they support it. Alls they have to do, alls we need is to give it the okay. So there's some conflicting information between what our athletic director says and what the policy is. Athletic director says it's the board's policy that we don't have co-ops. When I was talking to the board members, it seemed to be that we relied on the athletic director for that, that information. I'm here to tell you, the kids don't care, they just wanna play. And as their coach for the last four years, I think they deserve that right to play. I sent on an email to all our team and the captains on those teams, from Spencer Tupi to Brody Lilies to Jordan Chalk and Connor Pond from the last year 9-10 team, to my son Reagan, the other captain, Aiden Scribner, and Ryan Hubery. And there was, I asked them to email and give me their names and addresses for support 'cause if you needed it, I would forward it on to you. I also talked to some parents privately that figured that if they publicly supported it, that they, they would be, have faced retribution in some of their other sports that their kids play, which I think is just ridiculous, but I mean, each, everybody for their own. So, I know that my son, who's a former captain from the 14U team, the other kids that I mentioned and their parents want these kids to play. I can't think of anybody on the team, nobody on the team when I sent the email or their parents have said no. So the crest, the crest is there, the need is there. I am as a, I'm here as a coach, potentially as a coach for New Prague High School as well, a parent and a community member, that didn't get any feedback from the athletic director from the email that I sent. That I did contact you guys and get some feedback from the board, but I'm here to say, out of fairness, and for the limited amount of numbers that we will have from TCU, that the right thing to do would be to have a limited co-op with them. Allow those players that come through New Prague Lacrosse Association that put in the time and effort, that put on a jersey that says New Prague, to still play with New Prague when they're done. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Now, we are starting the cross season here this month, I think. And I, I think we have enough people to field the JV team this year. And so we will just stick with what's been recommended by our admin. I think as far as the co-op things go, there's probably a little misunderstanding, and I don't know that we need to get into it in this forum right now. But I think that comes from a superintendent request and not a, not an athletic director request.
Okay, I know that, I made the request to both, and that our athletic, TCU's athletic director asks our athletic director, New Prague's athletic director, for the superintendent's contact information.
Yes, it comes, it comes as a request from the superintendent of the other district, and I don't believe that happened as far as I understand. But, but it's being added as a sport for the students in the New Prague School District.
Well, I mean, that's the board's decision. I, I mean, I can't change the board's decision. I think that the policy that should be, that in fairness, that hey, if we're gonna let them play for New Prague Lacrosse, that they should have the opportunity to play. They don't have any opportunities to play anywhere else. And that's, that's the justification. So if the request needs to go to the superintendent, my call from when I leave here will be to their superintendent. I'm sure that Brendan's parents will make that same call to the superintendent. We made that request from the athletic directors if that was what needed to be, and we were basically told not to bother. So I'm not sure where that communication is or where that backlash is. You can field a team with 10 players.
Well, and, and this is just an open forum, it's not meant to be a discussion.
Yep.
We're technically not even supposed to respond, but I just wanted to let the students know that it was added as a varsity sport for New Prague students, as is the other sports we've added.
Yep, and I'm just here to tell you that all those students that are playing New Prague, that I've talked to, support that co-op decision. And that's why I'm here, 'cause I told them that I would, and that's why I'm here, to present that opportunity so that the kids that they played with, their friends, and New Prague Lacrosse Association have the same opportunity to play in high schools they do. Thank you.
We have one adjustment to the agenda for this evening. We're gonna remove the closed session. Item number 10, we don't need that at this point in time. Get a motion to approve.
Go move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0. Consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0. Committee reports, policy.
Not really much to report, just some minor changes to the policies. We reviewed a couple of things that needed to be removed that really weren't actual policies.
And that's all on the agenda too. Southwest Metro.
Southwest Metro Intermediate School District held their meeting last Tuesday. And at the meeting, it was regular business as usual, but we also had a nice report from the students that are involved in career and technical education through Southwest Metro. The two of them that were featured were the ET, Emergency Technical Team, that trains students to become EMTs. And also, we had a report from the students that belonged to the Southwest Metro FFA organization as well. And very nice reports, they're very pleased with the programs that they have offered at Southwest Metro, and were very highly impressed. The whole board was very highly impressed by the fact that these kids are so enthused about the programs. And that was about it. CPAC met also in February. The main meeting agenda was about transitions. And transitions is a very important part of special needs, needs for students as they go through the regular education program in their schools. Getting them into transition types of adult living is very important. Special needs students are in special needs until the age of 21. So even in terms of young adult education and support, career and things like this, it's a very important part of the special education makeup. So transitions was the item that was very much talked about. And then also, they talked about the Duck Cup Mental Health Awareness Event, and how important that is as far as the students are concerned, to be involved in something that is very supportive of people that have some serious emotional, emotional needs.
Do we still do transitions here?
Oh yes, mhm.
So, so we wouldn't have any in the transition program at CPAC, or you were just talking about the transition programs?
Here at, here at New Prague.
Community Ed.
That's mine now, not till March.
Wellness?
We met in February here, and Jamie Carlson from SHIP came in and just did a presentation on e-cigarettes and vaping, and how it relates to the health of the students and things to, you know, just making people aware of what to be looking for and what the variety out there is. And, and other than her presentation, it was just a kind of a collaboration of coming up with some new ideals for this year for wellness.
Early childhood?
No meeting.
Superintendent reports.
Okay, start with the good news first here. I wanna congratulate Ally Isens, a sophomore, for getting to the state gymnastics meet and the balance beam and uneven bars. And then also Nick Novak, this past weekend for section, took second place, so he qualified for state, second appearance in a row in 120-pound weight class. So congratulations to both Ally and Nick. Some things, we just had our joint powers meeting, and when I spoke last time on the update with the Fitness and Aquatic Center, we had 1,860 memberships, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, 1,860 members, I should say. We've got almost 2,300 members right now, we're at 2,074, so we increased almost by 220 members. And memberships went up, in one month's time, we had 70 more memberships, so we went from 1,040 to 1,110. And these numbers I've been giving you actually are February 15th numbers. No, no, they are up to date, I'm sorry. Megan Geeson just gave me them. But anyway, so we went up 70 memberships in a month, so very positive news with that. And Sandy Lynn, our business manager, went over that with the Joint Powers Board earlier today, and we're, we're feeling very good about things in regards to that. Another thing I wanna mention, we have School Bus Driver Appreciation Day this Wednesday, February 27th. Our administrative, administrative team is hosting a breakfast at the bus garage after their morning route to show the appreciation for the great work that they do. I guess it sort of dovetails what I'm gonna talk about here with bad weather decisions here, but they do, our bus drivers and, you know, a lot of districts contract out, we have our own bus, bus department, bus company, and our drivers do a wonderful job, and they have such a positive attitude and do just great work for us. So we really appreciate that. Today, again, we didn't have school last night. As you guys know, the winds and the snow we had, especially we had a lot more snow south of town, in Rice County, Lonsdale area, actually even just straight south. And talking to Craig and Steve Trichka, our bus supervisor, we didn't, they weren't very optimistic yesterday. And talking to the superintendent from TCU, I mean, they decided to close, I decided to stay optimistic and go with the two-hour late start. But we actually had, Steve Trichka ended up having to get his pickup towed, as he was on Township Road south of town, just east of Lonsdale, and Craig had to back up about three-quarters of a mile. There was a snowdrift block in the road. So, you know, the thing that people don't understand, you wake up in the morning in New Prague and go, why in the world would you have school closed? But it depends, I guess, if you could, we could go plowed roads only and have 80% of our kids and leave 400 to 800 kids behind on Township Road. So that's the problem we have when it comes to a decision like that. And it, whatever, whether it's snow, ice, or whatever, it's, it's never easy. We want our kids in school as much as possible. We're fortunate, you know, we've had flexible learning days, you know, ready to go for four years, and we went our first three years without even using it. And now this year, the only good thing is we're getting probably pretty better at it now since we've had a lot of practice. But I've got an article that I sent to Chuck Kier for the New Prague Times that sort of explains what the state law is and everything, and we've sent some stuff out to our staff. So I encourage people to read that, and I'm sure we're gonna have really nice weather the rest of the winter here too. Don't count on that, but, so anyway, just wanna sort of touch on that and explain that, what that situation is. Okay?
Thank you.
Your bet.
Action discussion items, late start, staff development.
Good evening, Board of Education, Superintendent Dittbrenner. Martin and I are going to talk about a late start recommendation, as we discussed a couple of weeks ago at the work session. And the late start, really, we'll have Martin talk about the purpose specifically, but it would be the third Thursday of each month for all of our schools, pre-k through 12th grade, except for October. That would be the second Thursday of the month, and it would be 90 minutes in length each of those eight times. And you've got the dates in front of you, and then the next slide will be a little bit more about the purpose, and we'll have Martin explain that.
So we are hoping to add the late starts to our calendar for a variety of reasons, and this would greatly impact our staff development time and our teacher-focused time without having the distractions from lesson or sub-planning. This year, we had our elementary teachers, we provided them additional sub-out time throughout the course of the year, and though they have been grateful for that time, it has been a distraction in terms of finding subs. And with the, with the school cancellations, everything continues to get bumped as well, and so we are running into issues with that, and also the financial burden of the sub-outs. And so we wanted to look at a new way to pull our staff together in multiple ways, whether it's, you know, focusing with the buildings, we're also looking at some vertical time, potentially across buildings, looking at certain departments that would maybe benefit from some of that time as well. And the, the direction would really be led by the principals at each site, and continuing student-focused conversations, really driven around data, and there can be multiple things that go underneath that. And by having the time throughout the course of the year, the principals and the teachers will really be able to dive in with the current needs each month, rather than waiting at a certain point in the year. So we feel that by doing this and offering this systematic time on a regular, consistent basis, that, that we know upfront will, will be provided, that we will be able to provide our students with, with more quality instruction on what, what they're needing and what we're seeing as deficiencies in our classrooms. So our principals would, would continue their work around the PLC four questions, and those are on your screen below. The collaboration that would occur would be very, very present in the sense that our students wouldn't be impacted with subs because our, they would, they would come late to school, but our teachers would be able to give all their work to their collaboration time and then be able to be very present in their classrooms. And then this would certainly guide and improve their day-to-day instruction. And so we are hoping to add this to our upcoming school calendar for next year, and then we will be able to reflect and see if this is something we want to continue on with future years. Questions regarding the late starts?
What would be the length of the class periods on a day when you would have this?
Sure, so at the elementary level, they would simply run a condensed schedule in terms of their specialist time would be condensed, and then the elementary teachers would be able to fluctuate their schedules a little bit differently. At the secondary level, the periods would be shortened, and...
Nicole, before Nicole speaks on this, just one other thing I need to tell you is that the expectation, when we, they proposed this a couple of months ago to me, I said one of the expectations I had was that if the school board was gonna approve this for professional development, then each of the buildings is gonna find more time for student learning time within their current daily schedule. So, you know, you get nervous when you see 90-minute late starts and eight of them, but it's for a good reason, like Martin's going over with the purpose right now, but we don't wanna lose that contact time with students, you know, student learning. And, and I know Nicole can talk about this, where she's created a couple of different schedules, and they're just simply drafts right now, but finding ways to increase learning time and still being able to do the late starts. Talk about that real quick.
So at the high school, we are considering two schedule proposals at this point. Each scheduled proposal, they're quite different, but each one actually, we would gain back instructional time even with the late starts. And I don't know if you have that at this point, but the first proposal gives us a seven-period day, three days a week, and a modified block, two days a week, which would mean on Wednesdays we would run periods 1, 3, 5, and 7, anywhere between 80 and 90 minutes, and on Thursdays we would run periods 2, 4, and 6, and we would be adding a structured advisement time in to develop college and career readiness curriculum, social-emotional curriculum, character development, and that would provide an opportunity for all those mental health speakers that we have that wanna come in, lots of different opportunities there. So that, in that model, the late start time would actually not impact our instructional time during the day. We would just remove our structured advisement time and run periods 2, 4, and 6 at about 85 minutes. And the second scheduled proposal, we would only lose an hour of instructional time, we would not have teacher collaboration time on Thursdays, and so we would be running 45-minute periods on that day. In both cases, it's a net gain of instructional time.
So you wouldn't have the early release?
On, we would continue...
On that Thursday, or you still would have it every Thursday?
We would have it every Thursday except for the late starts. We would flip it, and we would do the late starts in the mornings, and then forego the early release time on those days.
This was a attachment to an email that Tim sent the board earlier?
Yep. Anything else?
Any other questions?
So right now, just so everyone's aware too, is we're gonna get to the calendar, the school calendar next, and we put the late starts on there, so that's included.
I can't even read the school calendar anymore, with the stars and the circles and the shade.
Yeah, we've got a new one that Sean and Janelle put together that, hopefully it's easier to read, but yeah, there's a lot of things going on.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Any questions?
Oh, do you, do we need, do you wanna approve of this right now, or?
I think we approve it within the total calendar, what I'll go over next.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, Janelle's gonna get the calendar up. As she's doing that, again, just, you know this, but just for the community and the public, this calendar, we had to get special approval of this from the state under the flexible learning waiver, and Sean Brandt did a great job of, throughout the application process here, and we tried to get it for three years, and the state responded and approved it for this first year, but I think they're gonna try to streamline the process from what they tell us, and then hopefully we'll get approval for the second, third year. This calendar was one of four options that we sent out to staff and also parents, and it was by far the number one choice by both parents and staff by, you know, close to 80% approval. This is a type of calendar we've had for the last four years. Due to construction, we were starting before Labor Day and ending sometime in May. I think three of the four recent calendars we've had like this have had a spring break, one did not have a spring break, and it all depends on the year and where some of the holidays fall and when you can have that. Not gonna go much in details here, but with this calendar, you know, in December, basically, there's two weeks off there during Christmas, New Year's time. There's also later in the year, you can see, in March, or I should say in April, is the first week in April's, the spring break time. We get done, last student contact day is May 28th, so graduation would be on May 29th. Please note though, Memorial Day is the weekend before, so it is after Memorial Day. I know one of the, the second most popular choice on the calendar, I can't remember what letter it was, but we're ending on the 21st if we did not have spring break, but that was not a favorable calendar as this one. So anyway, like I said, starting before Labor Day and ending in May for this calendar for this time, so. And on this calendar too, I should mention too, is, oh, I was thinking we had the dates on here.
They are, they're orange, orange.
Oh, they're orange, I thought it was, I see, I'm colorblind, so I'm just, I'm not looking at the calendar. So it's the orange ones on there that are, so we have it signified on that, so yeah, there'll be colored printouts here, so, good job, Janelle. Any questions on the calendar? It's a little bit late this year, I appreciate everyone's patience, we've been getting, I shouldn't say we, Janelle's been getting calls about this for the last month and a half probably, if not before that. So I know people are eager to get the calendar out, and I ask for your approval of this calendar, and entertain any questions that you might have.
Someone wanna make a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the 1920 calendar.
Second.
Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0. Fitness Center Coordinator Memorandum of Understanding.
So when we started the Fitness and Aquatic Center, of course, we hired a supervisor for aquatics, a supervisor for the fitness... a supervisor for the fitness. We also, at that time, Megan Geeson, the supervisor for fitness, decided she needed someone to help her do the fitness center coordination of all the classes, helping with new member orientation kind of things. And the position works right now 20 hours per week. And it's not been on an MOU. We really didn't know how, how, you know, how well it would go and how many members we'd get and so forth when we first started. So we started to be very, started very conservatively. Now, you know, you've heard the reports from Tim that it's gone very well and this really is a needed position within the Fitness and Aquatic Center. So we'd like to put it on an MOU. There's not enough hours to receive full benefits, of course. The salary is not changing. There's no addition to the, to the budget because this was included in our, our fitness budget already. What it does give is some paid time off benefits, some holidays, vacation, sick time. That's really the only difference. So it's just acknowledging that this is a regular employee, regular position with the district and giving some of those paid time off benefits.
Any questions on that? I get a motion to approve the contract memorandum?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes six, zero. Education Foundation Grant Approval. There's three grants coming from the Education Foundation. Middle school, a blood pressure system unit for the elementary, combined elementary schools, some Brainbuster bins challenging activities to promote grit. And then middle school, a makey makey, which is students providing or creating their own games. So we just need to accept those donations?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes six, zero. Recertification of Identified Official with Authority. Or Iowa, as it says.
Yep.
This is a requirement from the Minnesota Department of Education that we have one official for the district that authorizes people to the system to use it to create the reports and, and just approve things and view them within the system. And so we did, we made this motion a while ago, assigning Tim, and it's supposed to be done annually. And so this will be added now to our January org meeting every year. So we just need to get it approved for this year with me as the backup. And then every year, this will be on the org agenda.
Can we change the name from Iowa to something else?
Don't get to make that choice.
The only thing I associate with Iowa is my wife.
Then you should want to leave it.
This thing isn't taped, is it?
Can I get a motion to?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes six, zero. That is our agenda. Motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.